This is the April 14th Planning Board meeting. And this is being recorded.
Like to call the meeting to order, please. 7:02. Could everybody state their name and that they're present, please, from the board?
George Moonlight Davis. And I am present.
Deb Smith, present.
And Mike Schaefer, present. Anybody in the audience tonight?
It looks like Brian is out there.
And Brian, okay, great. So call the meeting to order. Could you pull up the agenda, please, if possible, Mariah?
I can. Hang on one second. I just need to figure out which screen is which. Can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Is it big enough?
Not really, for me, maybe for...
That's always a problem.
That's better. That's good. Thank you.
I mean, I also, I have a copy of it on the clipboard, because when you start reading down there, I have to, I can't see it on the screen, so.
Okay.
So Deb, thank you. I just got your email. Would you like us to go through your minutes before we do Sun He's from the last meeting? What would be your preference?
Doesn't matter to me, Mike, whatever you guys want to do. There's, I sent four sets over, two are some really old stragglers that I have no record of being approved, and, I'm sorry, three are, and one is from the meeting back in February 4th.
Okay. Well, let's try doing Sun He's, because there, I couldn't open that today, Mariah. She, I don't have software that can open it, but evidently you did.
Okay.
Good information.
One second.
While we're waiting, Mariah, is it is it possible that we could look at some of your, that I could at my own speed and time, look at somebody's old videos, because we take them all the time, right? You record these things, right?
Yep, so right now on YouTube, we have, I think, four months' worth. So if you go, if you Google Town of Irving on YouTube, or if you Google Town of Irving YouTube, and then you go to playlists, you'll see there's one for Planning Board here.
Okay.
And if you click View Full Playlist, right now we have January, two February meetings, and March. And between Brian and Jake, they're both trying to upload the backlog, but because we have to upload every board's meeting, it can be kind of challenging to keep up, so we'll keep adding more, and if there's a specific meeting that someone wants added, I'm happy to request that that be put on the priority list.
Okay.
I know Sun He had mentioned when she spoke to me that she was trying to go back to these, she has minutes due from quite a few meetings, and she was gonna go back. And when we go through her minutes and make corrections, use that to correct them, because she needs to issue a few months' worth of minutes now. So that would be, she'll be getting in touch with you if she hasn't already on how to do that.
Yeah, I think there was one or two that she had asked, and I, even though they weren't on YouTube yet, I was able to just send her a link to the there's like a storage thing that I was able to link her to, so if she needs anything else, I'm happy to help her with that.
No, that was probably, yeah, thank you. Okay, so this is from March 18th. Present were Mike Schaefer, George Moonlight Davis, Deborah Smith, and Sun He May. Yes, we're Brian Smith, Jeffrey Rollins. Colty, Colty, how do I say, Colby, Colby Levine. And was there, is that it? I thought we had one other person. Well, Mariah, you...
Jake was.
I wasn't here at the last one.
Well, that's right, you weren't there, okay. Jake? Does she have Jake?
No, she has to take out Brian and put in Jake.
That's right.
Yeah.
Because Jake was here, we didn't see Brian.
Right, right.
Can you guys see me okay? Am I too dark? I mean, that's a hell of a question to answer.
That is not, from Mike, what kind of question is that?
I'm sorry, did I screw that up? I didn't mean to.
We can see you just fine.
All right, there's our joke for tonight. Meeting 7:09. Review meeting minutes and corrections. Discussion of current marijuana uses and bylaws. Board members to learn more about outdoor growing and make a decision. I don't know, I haven't learned much more about that, but I have heard more places are allowing it. Mariah Hatfield, I think, is doing it. That's quite a, do you know much about that, or?
I haven't been following it super closely, so no, I wouldn't say that I do.
I think Col Rain is, when it... You have Moonlight?
But I know, I know that all of the towns are seeing the dollar signs from people wanting to, you know, grow and and cultivate, so they're trying to figure out ways to get them on the board, because I think it's just, it's just a matter of time before it's just like totally taken over in some way or another. We need to make a decision about it, though.
There were, in the mail that, from last month, there were probably three marijuana things going on, mostly in Orange, but it's, it really is going on a lot. Okay. So is that, we need to add any more about that? Is that adequate? Okay, ADUs, attached dwelling units within the area of a residence, there are three styles. Invite Peggy for information. I think Deb was gonna do more research, too, on it. I don't know if you had time, Deb, to look into that some more.
I haven't, I am still working on it. There's a lot of information out there, so I'm kind of sorting through what I think would be the best to pass along.
If it's okay with the board, Peggy is available for our next meeting to come in, and that was one of the things she said she could tell, tell us her ideas on. Good way to form AUDs. Not make it too complicated, and, you know, some of them get pretty complicated, so. If that, is that something everybody would like? You could ask her. The other thing I kind of asked her about was affordable housing. I don't think I understand it well enough, and I, I think people might have questions about it. If those, and if anybody had any other questions, we could let her know ahead of time. And she could try to speak to them.
I think it would be a good idea that maybe at the end of the meeting, maybe you guys summarize what your main questions are on different topics, and then, like you said, Mike, send them to her ahead of time, so that she has time to prepare, and in that way, you know, everyone's on the same page.
Okay, that's a good idea. We'll do that at the end of the meeting. I'm trying to take notes, so bear with me if I can read them afterwards. All right. Discussion of Central Village and Plan New Urban Development, yeah, that should be Unit Development, correct? Not, not Urban.
Yeah.
Proposed Zones. So anyhow, this got really kind of screwed up last time. We were, I think, looking at the wrong map, so could, could, is there a... I don't know if we can, but... Well, we'll read through it.
Well, can I ask a question? Is any of this related to the email from Deb? The wrong map?
I think so. I think that's what this paragraph refers to. We were looking at, no, no, I'm sorry.
No, I was, I personally was, I had something else up on the screen, and I thought you guys were looking at one map, and assumed that you were before I spoke, and I learned a very valuable lesson, that I should always pay attention to the screen before I opened my mouth. So I don't think, I don't think whatever map I thought you guys were looking at changed the discussion at all.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to at least acknowledge that I had read that email, and that I appreciated you coming forth with how you felt about it. I just wanted to be clear, so that we can move on with it. All right, so do you have the other map? Is it available?
We can, let's get through the minutes. So this, this does read okay. Mike makes a motion to keep the PUD limited to the CV and French King. Sun He seconds. Deborah and Mariah have worked diligently to make proposed PUD zones. Discussion pursued to gather more information around PUD. Moonlight and Sun He would like to gather some information about what PUD would actually entail. Mike rescends his proposal until the next meeting, bringing forth more information. And Mariah sent out some good information today. Haven't really had a chance to read it. I did the one, the one from last year, but not the new stuff, but, did you, um, and then, okay, discussion on so that, that sounds okay, I think. That's how we left, left it last time. Discussion on special I'm sorry, go ahead, Deb.
Okay, I would probably, Mike, on that last line, I would change it, though, to just read Mike Riston's, his motion.
Okay. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to capture all these corrections, but discussion on special permit allowance for three to five years, make a number of bylaw booklets. So that was just, you know, getting back to the special permit and site plan. Change, making changes there. New business included lot size that Mariah will discuss upon her return. The French King Solar Connection on Route 2. Separate revision connection to, separate revision connection to Route 2, which DOT was okay with. Possibly through, though, about a phone extension for the planning board at a cost of 28 per month. New business cards to be made up next Monday meeting on, okay, next meeting on Wednesday, April 14th at 7:00 PM. I joined at 8:00 PM. Yeah, we, on the business cards, Jake said that we could use, I think, someone's extension at the town hall, and we didn't need our own extension, if I remember him saying it correctly. It used to be Betsy, and Deborah said that your name's listed, Mariah, I think, on the website. So would you be the one who would take all the planning board calls, you know?
Well, I guess, what are you, what does that?
So we could pass business cards out when we go places.
Um, I think so. Let me think about that, just because if that then means that, I guess it means like, what does that entail? If it's just taking messages and passing them along to people, I'm fine with that. If it's doing more clerical stuff, then I think I want to discuss that with Brian first.
Yeah, you may want to anyhow. I don't know how you might want to ask, that's, I don't, I don't think you're gonna get a lot of calls, but...
I wouldn't think so either. I'm totally fine if it's just putting my phone number on there, so that I can then take messages and pass them along to the appropriate people. I'm fine doing that, or answering basic questions. If it's more, you want to need to be kind of like a planning board clerk, I don't think I can do that.
I don't think we're, we get, I, I wouldn't get that many calls, but like, when I went to that site visit for the solar installation, Brian was there that day, and there were probably a dozen, 15 people. It would have been nice to have been able to give people a card, so that they knew who I was anyhow, so.
Okay.
All right. So I'll try to, I didn't catch all the corrections there. The biggest one, I guess, was Jake instead of Brian.
And changing the PUD from Planned Urban Development to Planned Unit Development. And that's in the fourth paragraph.
And, and I rescind the motion, and, okay. I think that's about it, right? All right, any, Deb, do you want to go through your minutes, if we can remember? Probably the February one we can remember.
So this is February 4th.
Yep.
All right. Chair. Michael Schaefer, George Moonlight Davis, Deborah Smith. And Mariah. The board called to order. This is a night, Sun He was out sick at 7:03. Approval Minutes and Mail Review. On a motion made by Mike and seconded by Moonlight, the planning board voted unanimously to approve the minutes as amended. The following amendments were made. At Moonlight as being attendee, in paragraph one, starting with discussion of updating please correct last sentence, to read, "Planning Board will hold a public hearing to receive feedback from residents." In paragraph two, review 6.1 at the end of the sentence and add for next meeting. Paragraph four, starting with A and R. And Brandon, remove reference to Brandon, he was not part of the discussion. And that there was a discussion regarding lot size, including that Brandon, well, well, gives feedback regarding the possible changes. Correct spelling of Brian Smith's name in the sentence about floodplain. Boy, good job, Deb. Make sure we get those to Sun He, so she can go, really, you corrected hers right there. No mail to review. Mike updated the board as to the status of A and R for River Road. At least one more signature is still needed. Mike confirmed with Brian that the plans were okay to sign, as they were missing the signature, signature section that is normally on the MyLars, yeah. Deb updated the board that Sergeant Holst would attend our next meeting, February 12th, to discuss marijuana bylaw. And I guess it's, he's Chief Holst now, correct?
I believe he is.
Yes, he is.
Board also reviewed the use table and where each, what each zone allows. Plan Unit Develop, the board discussed the PUD and map. Mike would like to vote on PUD and feels the map doesn't need to be ready in order to vote on the language. Mariah pointed out that we hadn't voted on it, because we needed to discuss the frontage amounts. Minimum lots are the new minimum lot.
I think it should be area. I think it's just missing an A.
Yep, thank you.
New structure height. Minimum lot area. Is that part of the, I don't, is that within the PUD, the minimum lot area on, or?
I believe it is.
Minimum lot area, oh, I think it's 80,000.
For the total PUD, or just for the, could you, I didn't, I don't remember, Deb, that's why I'm asking.
When we get to the PUD and just get through the minutes for now?
Planned Unit Development continued. Suggestive frontage be changed to lesser amount. Mike would like to see what the frontage on each area that is being proposed in the PUD before discussing further. Deb updated the board as to the zoning map. Mariah met with Ryan and Deb and went over all the changes with him that we would like to make. Mariah and Deb presented the proposed change of possibly adding the French King District to the area along Route 2, along Old State Road. Mike didn't feel this was a needed change. Floodplain bylaw update passed over until next meeting, adjournment, and future meetings. Due to the technical difficulties, the planning board quorum was lost, so the meeting was ended at 8:00 PM. The next planning board meeting will be February 11th, respectively. Now, I think that, did we have any corrections? Just a couple, right?
Yep.
And I've got, you don't worry, you don't have to note them, Mike, I'm, I've got it here.
All right, thank you. That was good. How about the older ones? Do we want to keep going?
Yeah, we could, because once these are done, we are, they're done. We've got them all taken care of.
And if you, I mean, you can keep going as you are. You can also just scan them, and if anyone has correction, you don't have to read through the whole thing.
Yeah, I'd have to read, I mean, I don't, I can't do it, that, would that be, what, why don't, we could do that, we could read them before the next meeting and let you know at the next meeting any changes, or would you prefer to get them done now, Deb?
No, it doesn't, there's only, these are the last three, so it doesn't matter to me. If you guys want to take them and read them, that is totally okay. They waited this long, one more meeting isn't gonna hurt.
Is that okay with you, Moonlight? We, we read, you read them on the plane, and then the next meeting, we, we look at them. All right.
But where, will they be in, in somewhere I can, you know, grab them?
Deb emailed them out, the same thread that Sun He sent her, so you should be able to print them from there.
When did you send it, Deb?
I sent them tonight, right about 5:45-ish.
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry, I sent them at 6:45.
Gonna have some trouble. Okay, Deb Smith, minutes approved tonight?
Yep, that's the one.
Okay, yeah, I'll take care of that while I'm on the plane.
So we, we approved February, what was that, 11th, maybe, or what was that date we just approved?
I believe it was the 4th.
The 4th. And we have three others.
Approved anything, because we haven't made a motion or voted yet, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the February 4th minutes as amended.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Did we, we didn't vote on Sun He's minutes either, did we?
I didn't think so.
Okay.
Well, you can't really, because she can't amend them, can she?
You can vote as amended, so you can say, we approve the minutes as amended, with the amendments that you just made, and then she'll just fix them and send them in.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 18th as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you for those minutes, Deb, but I'll take a look at them. I didn't do...
You're welcome. If you guys catch anything, just shoot me an email.
Okay. On the the mail, I, when I looked at it, the only other thing that kind of, you remember Sessions from Northfield, they were looking to put, go down at one time to the Strathmore Paper Area. I think that was one of the the people that they had identified that would be interested in going to the paper mill, but they just, they just signed a contract, I saw, with a place in Orange, I believe, so they're going to an industrial, they are moving, but not, you know, they're moving to Orange, so. That was, you know, that, that's kind of too bad, we missed out on somebody like that, too. But, and then the rest of them were mostly marijuana, and then one wireless. Some towns are trying to get better what, 5G to different parts of the town, so that, I know Sun He is working on that for next year, you know, but those were what different towns were working on. Then, old business. The marijuana bylaws, we started working on that last meeting again, right, and the table. We couldn't, we didn't make any changes to anything, though, did we? Without Mariah.
No, we didn't.
Did you start to think about what you wanted to fill in? Um, the, the grid with? I don't remember if we started on here. Close your eyes, don't get carsick.
The only thing, you know, I, I brought it up last meeting, and is, so, you know, two, these, I may not be calling it the right thing, but the business, the small business is up to 2,000 pounds of marijuana a year. That's gonna be a pretty sizable amount to process. It's gonna take a lot of water and create a lot of odors.
What are you saying, Mike?
I don't know. I think we were gonna go special permit across the board on a lot of stuff, if I remember right.
So the...
Micro business, marijuana bite micro business, that was the one that I was thinking. It might not be practical to have a business that big somewhere where you don't have water supply and, 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 I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but...
I guess I would then challenge that, Mike, with, would you not allow a craft brewery to go into somewhere that wasn't on a public water supply? Because to me, they're kind of a craft brewery. I don't think a lot of people think of it, but you use a ton of water for making beer, for making alcohol.
I think most of them probably are on a sewer, public sewer, I would imagine. Yeah, you're right, they do use a lot of water to process. The, I don't know of any one that is, do you know of some that are not, maybe there is a couple that are on town, on their own sewer and water.
I wouldn't think that would be possible in most cases.
No. That was my only one I got thinking more about, was, do we want to keep that more Central Village and French King and Village, well...
Right now, just for reference, you have on the use table, it's currently that the processing and product manufacturing of medical or recreational marijuana, including edibles, is a no in oops, hold on, it's a no in Central Village and the French King, and a special permit in Village Residential and Rural Residential. And it is independent testing marijuana is a special permit in everywhere except for Village Residential.
So what you just said is just opposite of what I was thinking, right? We were allowing it in, in Village Residential and Rural Residential, the, the the thing that makes, was it edibles you were saying?
Yeah, well, it's any processing or product manufacturing, including edibles, and this is, I believe, what is Yeah, uh, well, it's any processing or product manufacturing, including edibles. And this is, I believe, what is, I guess it's being added to this, so. This is section four point one two. So, yeah, so this is, these are being added to the use table on top of that. So if you wanted to make changes to what you currently have in the use table, you could also do that.
Oh, we're not seeing what's in the use table right now. I, I see.
So this is what is your, your current. These two.
Yeah, I, that wasn't on the last one. That, I see it now, but it wasn't. If you weren't reading the same one on the last one, because I didn't see the two no's or two yeses.
Right, so these, the other one I was showing you is the new bylaw that, um, that is being proposed. So these are the ones that Peggy sent you all, that are being, that would be added to your current use table.
Right, I think that's where we were. I, that would be nice to be able to do what you just did, show the two next to each other, so that.
Oops, hold on. Let's see if I can paste this in here. Well, I can reformat that after.
Good, that's good, that helps. So. Processing and product manufacturing, medical. See, I think we said no because we didn't want the odor next to people. If I, you know, if I'm, maybe Deb, you remember, but that's probably why we said no.
I know, it was so long ago, I honestly don't remember, but what really is striking me as very unusual is I, I'm gonna go back and, and, and look at the minutes, just for my own peace of mind. Because I don't understand why we would have said no to processing and manufacturing in the French King Commercial District. Because it's a commercial.
Only thing I remember is the odor, you know, we were worried about from processing marijuana is pretty strong odor. And, and, uh, I can remember that coming up down around Renovators. They, we didn't want to have it smell. There were maybe school kids down there and, uh, I don't know.
And I recall Renovators issue was at the time, there was a school inside of the Renovators building.
That's right.
I don't remember, I just, I don't, I'm sure we did, I just don't recall a discussion around odors. But to me, processing and product manufacturing, I mean, that's about as French King district as it gets.
There are some issues around there, but not, one, the school is not there no more. And two, the, the, the odor, um, although it may carry some some odor to it, I, it, it doesn't seem to be that bad in that area and it's not gonna affect a large number of people.
Well, and I'd have to go through and look, but I, I'd almost guarantee that in the, the rules and regulations for a, a facility like this. I would be absolutely floored if they didn't include having to have some type of air scrubbers. I can't, in this day and age, I can't fathom that this type of facility would go in and, and they wouldn't be required to have scrubbers. I mean, coffee places, coffee manufacturers have to now.
That would all be part of the special permit if we went, you know, you're right. We, we could put that on as a, as a restriction. I, I would believe. So, I think this helps a lot, maybe, um, do we need to look at this longer on our own? Adding the two, the sections together? I mean, I, 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 we should have done this prior to this.
So these ones, I just want to explain, so these two that have been filled in, I filled in after Chief Holst came to your meeting, because you guys decided then that you thought that was what you wanted for the social consumption and the indoor cultivation. It was these three that you had, these three uses that you had left to decide on. And if you want to make changes to these two, um, then you would have to decide on that.
I thought. I swear that we had this. I am, I'm remembering the delivery only, we said was special permit everywhere but Village, and Village was a no.
Let me take a look and maybe there's another copy of this that I had saved. Because I remember having that conversation. I don't remember if you all decided on it.
Yeah, and I thought.
You know, Deb?
What was that, Moon?
Why did we, why did we say no special permit for the Village, for Central Village?
I think we decided that for Village Residential, it was just to, or maybe we did say special. Maybe you're right, Moonlight. Maybe we said special permit everywhere for that one.
That's what we did. I, I think that's what I remembered, Deb, but the thing I don't. We're setting ourselves up for a ton of special permits. That's the only thing, you know, to keep in mind, so.
Well, you know what? If we have to do it that way, we're just learning how to do this, uh, uh, Mike. You know, we don't really know what, we haven't even come up against a whole lot of crap yet.
No. But I think, Mariah, you're right, we gotta go back and look at the other stuff. It doesn't make any sense if we do it one way here and, and change it, you know, no, somewhere else, you know? Especially like the, I don't, you, you, you don't have no to make an edibles and then yes, or special permit for microbusiness. They're almost the same thing, I think, right? I, I would think.
I think, and, and what I don't know, I would have to go back and look, but if, if you all want to go through and look, I don't know if the, the definition of the microbusiness um, like supersedes this definition. I, I don't remember because it's been a while since I've looked at this. But if you look through the definitions in the marijuana bylaw.
Yeah, we did.
That's the no more than two thousand pounds. So this might be the, this processing and product manufacturing might be a regular size. It's not limited to a certain amount of pounds. And the microbusiness might be the same thing, but smaller.
I see.
If I remember correctly, when we talked about it, um, the processing and product manufacturing was there was no size restriction on it, so it could be small, giant.
So maybe that was why you said no and then special permit, whether you thought it would be really big. I'm not really, I'm speculating, but.
I just, I. Mike and I agree that cafes originally were a no across the board, and that one in particular. I cannot fathom that we said special permit in, in our two residential areas, but then said no in C V and French King.
That's right.
My gut says to me, those are backwards, and it should have been S P, S P, no, no.
I thought it was S P across the board.
You know what's interesting is, um, this is different than what I have on here. So I have the paper copy here. I wonder if you guys changed this. Through all of the uses, like the entire use table. Because on, so on the paper copy that I have here, um, the processing was S P, S P, N S P. So you would have changed V R to an N, and I think the conversation around that might have been if someone was at their house and they wanted to process marijuana as like a small business, but maybe that was before we had the conversation about the marijuana microbusiness.
I, I guess I'm getting myself confused. I, can, can we probably go back?
I think we deleted one up here. Or something deleted up there. Got moved.
They're not in order, they're not lining up right anymore.
Yeah, so let's see if I.
Let's just not worry about, can we get the correct one to us? So, um, we can look at it, you know, for next meeting. I don't think that, I'm getting too confused now looking at, at this.
Okay, well, you have all the documents, so you should be able to, to look at it.
I don't know if I have the proposed, uh, recreational. I, it would be nice to have it the way you have the two sections overlaid what with one another. So you can make sure you're consistent between what we used to have and what.
Okay, um, I will try to insert those and send it out then.
Yeah, if you could do that for the, the next meeting, that would be great.
So I'm going to, I'll try to do that tomorrow, and if you can all look at this before the next meeting and come prepared with proposals, I think it'll make it go a lot faster. Because, um, you know, then you can say, well, I had this for this one, rather than trying to go through the conversation for each, each one.
So you're gonna try to combine the existing and, and, and Peggy's proposal. Is that, that's correct, right?
I'm going to, I will insert the marijuana use table, the proposed marijuana use table into the draft zoning bylaw use table.
Okay.
And I, I have tracked changes on this, so I'll just have to go back and figure it out, but it looks like one line must have gotten accidentally deleted, and that's why they're off by one line. But it is still strange because you had it as no in most of the locations, or you had a special permit with a no in French King, I think. Anyways, I'll send it out.
Thank you. All right, we'll do that for the next meeting. We'll try to be, be prepared. Oh, Mariah, I had one other quick question when I'm thinking of it. The, uh, Culvert bylaw. If, that should be in our zoning bylaws now, right? That got approved by the Attorney General. The Culver, I'm sorry, the, uh, last year when you put, you got it in for, um, what do you call it? Where the, the aprons?
Yeah, I don't, that was in zoning, though. That was something separate. That was just a general bylaw, I believe.
Oh, I thought it went into our.
A, a special hearing, it would have been a zoning change.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, um. All right, the pod, I guess it's the next, um, topic, so.
So it looked like last time you guys had some questions about it, so I sent out that email, and I realized that you guys probably haven't had a chance to read it yet because I sent it out this afternoon. But I'm happy to answer any questions that I can about this. Any that I can't, we can ask Peggy. But I sent out two, um, kind of summary level, uh, summaries of what a planned unit development is, and they had, one of them had an example of one in Amherst. Um, they focus mostly on residential planned unit developments. Um, they can be mixed use, but they should offer you at least a kind of a mental picture of what it is that we're talking about.
Can, would it be worthwhile to go look at the one in Amherst, or?
It's up to you. You could, you could go for a drive down there and take a look. It's a nice neighborhood. I've walked it before. We, we actually walked it in, um, one of my planning classes as an example of, of, you know, a planned unit development. It's, um, it's a basically a cluster of neighborhoods where it has one main road, um, that has walking paths on either side. And then there's little cul-de-sacs that kind of come off of it that have, um, very small, kind of narrow roads. And then around the whole development, there are trails that kind of connect the little neighborhoods together. Uh, because it was denser kind of clustered development, they were able to conserve, I forget if it was like twenty acres or something of green space that is around the actual development, so everyone has access to, you know, walking trails and things like that through the woods.
Can I ask a quick, where is this exactly, Mariah?
It's called Echo Hill. It's in, I believe it's like South Amherst.
Oh, yeah, I've been up in there. That, there's a fitness place there, uh, big fin, there's tennis courts. When you go on Route nine towards Belcher Town from, uh, Amherst, it's on, I think it's. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I know where it is.
I used to live right near there, and it's, it's a really nice spot.
Yeah, I've been up there. I, I remember now. I mean.
There is like a medical thing in there, too, I think, somewhere, or there's something industrial, not, and, well. There's a, the health center, but I think there's something else, too, in there. So, like you said, it's not heavy industry, but it's, it's good.
Well, and that's, I mean, it's in the same area, but that's not, I want to be clear, those things are not part of this development. This development was built in, I think, the, I want to say the seventies. Um, and it's, it's a residential neighborhood, so those are, are near there, but they're not part of the planned unit development that is Echo Hill.
I see.
I don't know if those are within Amherst Plan Unit Development Overlay District. I'm not familiar with what their different zones are. But this is an actual, this was like, so the idea of a planned unit development is that someone is buying usually one large parcel or several adjacent parcels and developing. Um, if you imagine like a campus where buildings are kind of closer together, but then there's areas that are more open space. That's what this is, where you're kind of sharing roads. You're maybe having clustered parking areas that there's not like parking at, say, every house or every apartment. It might be, this is a parking area, this is a housing area. Um, all of the, all of the goals that you're trying to accomplish with this proposed bylaw are in this first section right here. And I think we, we've talked about them a few times, but if you want to just read through it, these are the goals that you're trying to accomplish with this plan.
So that might be another, if Peggy, I don't know if she has any other examples, too, but those, that, that's helpful to see.
I mean, you can just Google planned unit development and you'll be able to find examples. I believe she also mentioned that there was one in, I, I don't know if it was Hatfield or somewhere. She had another example and you can ask her about it, but definitely if you Google them, you'll be able to find others.
Anybody else, any other questions? Uh, well, we were gonna look at the, the frontage. We, we still need a frontage requirement, right?
So this has four hundred square, or four hundred feet of frontage in an eighty thousand square foot lot. I, I think a four hundred feet of frontage is fine. Um, I had sent out when you asked Mike for Jackie's information on what the current frontage of most of the parcels that we're considering to be part of this. Um, I sent that information out to you guys when I got it, and most of them are well over four hundred square feet. I think there was one in the French King district that was smaller, um, and maybe one over by Renovators, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I'm thinking, no, I, this is more the frontage, though, right? Uh, it wouldn't be square feet, it would be, could, I tried to read that map that you sent, and I couldn't really read the frontage on it. Um, I don't know if that's something we, we could look at.
Did we talk about last week, uh, our last meeting? We talked about, because I think Sun He brought it up, that those areas in red that were potential. We were gonna try to border them off and make clear what is actually usable and, and, and what wasn't, because I know behind my house, I don't think any of that is usable.
So, we, if you pull, I think this might have, I was. So we, if you pull up, I think this might have, I wasn't at the last meeting, obviously, but I think this might have been where the miscommunication that Deb was talking about earlier happened was um with the maps, so let me pull it up one second. Um. So when we worked with Ryan, and this map is a a draft, you can ignore this purple over here, and there's a few other things I think that needed to change, but when we looked at the PUD with him, we limited it to. What was that?
No, this is, I I see what you did, you changed the French King back a little bit there, that took out the the land that was, yeah, that's good.
Yep, so it's set back from the river some here, and then down by your house, Moonlight, it covers, this is all Renovators parcel, and this part back here is already developed, so it is only on land that is currently built upon, he, this back hall here is all um, it's all just like river marsh and it uh, right. So this, he he, we deliberately looked at the satellite images, and we basically picked an area that was surrounding what is already developed over there.
And you think that that we could put a street in there and 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 run and run some houses back up in there?
It wouldn't necessarily have to be houses, it could be, um, I mean, it could be, maybe, um, but it could be something like, maybe they want to reuse some of the buildings, but they also want to add another building there, and have it be whatever, you know, us, it could be, yeah, it could be basically anything except for heavy industrial, I think, is what is outlined, it still has to meet the use table for, this is CV, and then this is um rural residential, I believe. I'm pointing to a map that you can't see, of course, because I have my screen over here, um, this is CV, this is rural residential, I believe, so um, it would still have to meet the uses, but you all would have more control over um deciding things like lot sizes and stuff, so like, um, maybe there's smaller parcels, because they're, they do want to put um some clustered housing or some whatever it is, um, does that answer your question?
It does, I, I I'm, I'm more interested now in how it develops, but I I think over time I will begin to see it, I see that you're making some adjustments, but I I, on some level, I still think that um uh, Son He's request to make some borders around it, so we could see what was going on may help a little more, but not necess, not, not at the moment, I I could see what you're doing, it's pretty clear to me what was happening here. At least on a map that I, yeah.
Would, so, well, Moonlight, you know that area very well, would would I know Son He would like to see the PUDs physically go and look at them, is there any way we can schedule a meeting sometime to go to these, Mariah, you know?
Um, so we're, uh, I'm gonna say maybe. Some of the landowners who we are currently proposing PUD to be on their property might not be amenable to having folks on their property, um, so maybe some of them, I, you would, the problem with this is you would have to reach out to every single landowner who is on the PUD, which, like, by the French King District, it's a very large area, so I mean, um, you could maybe try, uh, I, are you gonna, I guess I, what I don't understand is like, are you gonna walk the whole lot, like, it's gonna be a lot of land to cover.
This one, I really want to walk in where the canal is and look at that, where, and find where you've got the PUD extended to.
So you can look on Google Maps, and you can see a satellite image, um, I I would hesitate to try to coordinate going on to property, you, Ryan just said that he can work with you to set up a site visit if you'd like. Um, if you go to. So this.
I'm getting sick, you know?
Sorry, you're gonna be looking on the airplane.
I see you running around in your backyard, Moonlight.
I just wanted you to know that I was getting ready to go to my trash can. Pause or something. Jesus, okay, so point out to me where we are.
So, Moonlight, you're over here.
Yeah.
You're that one, I think, yeah?
Yeah.
And you're driving down Stratchon Street. This is, I think, some kind of a garage back here.
That's the entrance, that's the entrance down the bottom here where your arrow is to the parking lot behind Renovator Supplies. Now, it looks like a road, but it's not, it's just an entrance to a uh, a property there.
Right, and then back here, it's hard to see because of the foliage, but there's a few outbuildings back here, and I think some storage trailers. So I think when we met with Ryan the area that we were covering.
You're not talking about storage trailers at Ed's house, because they're back there as well.
Is this Ed's house here?
Yeah, this is all Ed's property that leads back up in here, that's right.
So I believe.
And if you walk the river, if you walk the river down, you'll see that um, there used to be, a long time ago, a place where they had picnics out there in that area, and that's what it looked like, but it would be, you'd be a little bit hard pressed to really make some development in it, and also they haven't had a flood in our area in about thirty years, however, we are due for one coming, and the one that happened two years ago just missed us as it rounded the bend and went out. So it it may not, you know.
Yeah, those are all things to consider, the the thing I would say, so this is the property line of your neighbor here, this is the line between their house, so it goes up to the property line, and I believe it just extends to where they already have things built. Now, that being said, anything new that they add on that property, it has to meet the Conservation Commission's rules, so the wetlands bylaw, it has to meet floodplain regulations, which you're currently, FEMA has requirements, which you're currently passing, you know, next time we add those in here, so they have to meet um, basically, anything they do can't increase the risk of flooding, um, I forget what it's called, it's called uh, they have to have an elevation study, and um, it can't it can't make any development that increases the base flood elevation, which basically means it would change how the water floods that area and increase potential damage from flooding, so there's all of these other regulations in place, too, about um where that happens. So you have that information as well.
Well, I'm, listen, I'm all for development, and I'm all for um, finding new areas. I just I am concerned that the area will be inundated with traffic and uh maybe not as.
Oh, Moonlight, I think you cut out.
I think he's frozen.
Oh, maybe, you're back.
I'm back.
You froze, Moonlight, could you repeat that?
Um. Yeah, I was just saying that that I'm all for developing the property, the land, so that we could do things with it. But as I saw from what you're saying, it looks like there'd be more traffic coming down my street and going in the back, and I sort of I have fear about that.
Yeah, I hear that, um, the way that they currently have their driveway set up doesn't mean that that's always how it will be. Um, so one of the things that this planned unit development does is it kind of gives them flexibility on how they access their property. So in terms of increase in traffic, right now, someone could still develop that property, they could add whatever they want back there. Um, this would basically allow them to potentially cluster things together, so like, you see where my mouse is? Like, if they, say they took down all of the outbuildings around here, and they made, say it was four condominiums or something, and they do four condominiums here, then they're leaving green space, I don't know if those numbers are correct, but it would allow them to build things closer together and leave more green space around the edges, so I would say that there's a chance that if Renovator Supply changes um use or hands, there could be an increase in traffic in your neighborhood, because maybe they have, maybe they renovate the building, and they have new apartments or new stores, um, so there is, I think, a chance that you'll, you could see a change here, I I think that that's a very reasonable thing to observe, um, but I also don't know I think that this would give someone who either currently owns or bought that property flexibility in if some of those buildings are currently dangerous or not up to code, and they had to be torn down, it would give them flexibility in potentially building them back historically um, how they would be laid out, because sometimes when you tear something down, and then you're going to try to meet new requirements, you can't. So I think those are all things to consider, and and maybe this isn't the final draft, you're welcome to change it, but I think when Deb and I were working with Ryan, um, we originally thought about stopping it at the CV, but then it didn't quite make sense, because they had they had buildings all the way out here, so we figured we should maybe incorporate where they had already developed.
It, you know what? It sounds okay, Mariah, but I bet you dollars a doughnuts that if the people in the neighborhood had a voice to say about it, starting with my neighbors in the front of me and on the side, I'm sure that they would prefer not to have that, at least the street traffic come down Stratchon Street, and that would make, that would make it a little bit difficult. Maybe if they came down the street off of the front of Renovator Supplies and went back there, that may, that may suit you know, some of that, but to come to use Stratchon Street and to come through there, it would just, I'm sure that the neighbors would not want it, it's such a quiet street now.
Yeah, and and that's, that can be part of your review, because if someone's applying for a special permit, or they're applying to do the the PUD unit, you're going to be reviewing traffic flow and things like that.
And that's just one area, Mariah, I don't even, we haven't even talked about the other areas that you guys looked at and wanted to work on, so really and truthfully, um I think we need to just go at it some more, I just, I mean to get a better understanding of 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 the idea, and is the the red lines and is the area that marked out, is that sort of like uh, set in stone, so to speak?
No, it can be changed, um.
I mean, just generally, because you were making it up, what did you think?
I think that we were very thoughtful in the areas that we selected and the reasoning why we selected it. Um, and so, I mean, obviously, I've worked on it, Moonlight, I agree with the areas that we've selected. Um, in this particular area, I don't believe it makes sense to, we already did, correct me if I'm wrong, Mariah, but we actually shaved this back a bit uh in this section, um, and it didn't make sense to leave out an area that was already developed. Um, you know, to me, that's kind of like saying to someone, oh, hey, before we did this, you could do what you wanted, whatever you wanted back there within the the rules and regulations, but now we're only going to go to here, so you lose that opportunity for the last remaining quarter of your property. Um, so I think, you know, by including the already developed areas, you'd almost say, oh, the areas have been developed, we've kind of already given the blessing for those areas to be developed, because they already are. Um, so I don't think rescinding that makes a lot of sense. I totally hear you about Stratchon Street, I know on my end of town, we're having a very similar conversation um regarding North Church and High Street and increased traffic flow, so I totally understand that. I Mariah, I think I'm wrong, but I would dare say we would have more control over the traffic pattern with the PUD than without it. It just, I think with the PUD, it actually gives us more opportunity to say to a developer, yes, you can do this, or no, you can't, or this is a known issue in the neighborhood, so we need to work within that. And I'm not so sure if that property was to be sold today, and let's just say another, you know, manufacturing type business went in there. So I don't really know, really could say much about the traffic patterns. I I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was just gonna add that one of the access requirements is that there's only one access point to a public way. So rather than having, say they did the whole Renovators property as a planned unit development, they would have one kind of main entrance, and then from there, if they needed to have whatever, a street going off of it or something, it would all be contained in that property, and quite frankly, the property isn't very big, so they're not gonna have like in Echo Hill, there's whole streets that come off to have little neighborhoods. Quite frankly, this property isn't big enough to do that, they might just have a driveway that goes all the way through. Right?
All right. Is Brian still available?
I think he's out there. I can unmute him if you have a question for him.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Brian, yeah, I I think, well, I I presented the PUD back in January at the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
And at that time, we had agreed to agree to see the sections, so if you're planning to change it, again, I gotta go back to the Conservation Commission and have them look at it again.
There's no new locations added.
You just took, we wanted, I wanted to keep it to the CV section, not include the old buildings that you included by the canal.
So, so I, sorry, the audio cut out a little bit, so I only heard bits and pieces of what, pieces of what you said, Mike, but it sounds like when you, when you and Mariah were clarifying, it sounds like there's a question about where the the proposed PUD district aligns with the existing zoning?
Correct.
Okay, I I mean, the reality is, the the planning board is in control of any proposed changes to the the bylaw, and there obviously would be public hearings, and there's always a review process with other boards and commissions who have um other regulatory uh authority, so the planning board can always take all of that under advisement, so that that's fine to seek uh guidance from the Conservation Commission, but I don't know that necessarily is a a requirement, a step that you must do with the Conservation Commission, they're gonna have a chance to weigh in, and the planning board then has a chance to consider in way how that impacts any proposed changes that you would present to the voters.
Okay, so what, when you, I presented it to the plan, the Conservation Commission, and they were concerned about having wetlands included in the PUD, so is that area a wetland on the other side of the CV?
The zoning map shows some of the wetland areas, but I think unless we had a detailed uh wetlands delineation in any of these areas, I I don't know that we would always have a full knowledge of what has a wetland, but what I would say, Mike, is that obviously the Wetlands Protection Act is a very strong statute um that gives Conservation Commissions and DEP a great amount of authority, and so whatever the planning board does um in terms of zoning regulations, that doesn't uh in any way hinder or or conflict with what the the authority under the Wetlands Protection Act, that the CONCOM of DEP has, so any proposed development in any zone, regardless of what you have for a use table and dimensional requirements, still has to comply with all the Wetlands Protection Act requirements, so that's still an effect.
Right, and and David said, we don't want to encourage development in the wetlands, so that is what we, that's why we do not, the Conservation Commission doesn't recommend having PUDs in wetlands, and that, Mike, I need to find out if that is a wetland, what you're proposing now. is a wetland, what you're proposing now.
But some of it, I think, guys and girls, some of it is, in fact, back up in there, very, very close to wetlands. And I think that that somewhat thought should be put into usage for property that could be considered usable and yet not necessarily suitable for residential development, which is probably where I'm coming from, guys, more than anything else. I I don't mind developing that piece of property back there behind renovated supplies, but I'm not so sure that it's it's suitable for residential.
Well, the PUD Moonlight allows for mixed-use development. I think the best example that can be shown is Echo Hill, because that's, it was actually one of the first in the state of Massachusetts to be done as a PUD. So I think it's a good example, but at the same time, I think it's a bad example because it's only residential. So it doesn't have that mixed use, which is more, I think, what we have in mind for a PUD. Um, and I just want to point out, when Mariah and I looked at this, we opted because that area that you guys are talking about where there may or may not be wetlands is already developed. So the, to me at least, the wetlands question in that specific area is mute because it's already developed. So it's not like we took and, you know, we we heard the concerns and reduced the PUD to pull it back out of undeveloped wetlands area. Um, the delineation and the sections we have are already developed areas. And I kind of feel like that's being missed.
No, I understand that. I'll go look at it and I'd like David Brew to look at it too with me when when I do.
I I'll have to reach out to the property owner and have a conversation with them and make sure that they would be okay with the site visit.
So you'll take care, you'll reach out, Brian, to them? Okay, thank you.
I also want to say to you guys, Mariah and Deb, I really appreciate your thought. And I I'm, I liked the conversation because I figured that we're gonna come to a good place around this eventually, simply because we're gonna really get to understand what it is we all want for that area. And I, as I said, I don't mind developing housing and residential areas, but I know that that I foresee some roadblocks, hindrance in the way of trying to put a residential thing back up in there by way of Stratchon Street.
Sure. There's one last thing that I want to clarify, and that is that someone could break off these parcels and still develop something there without PUD. So someone could still put housing back here. It, you know, if they wanted to, it it was in the rules and regulations of all these other things that we've talked about.
Isn't that part of special permit?
No, it's rural residential and this is C V. We don't have any zones that say that you can't build anything.
Moonlight, I believe that that's approximately twenty-five acres. And there's, there's sufficient frontage in both on River Street and on Stratchon Street where, to Mariah's point, if a landowner possessed that and wanted to subdivide it into different parcel sizes, they could present a subdivision plan to the planning board.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm doing well, sir. How are you?
I'm okay.
The IP mill location that we included, which is basically the the IP mill property up to to like where it stops being developed. So the actual property, sorry, Moonlight, I'm gonna make you carsick again. I believe the actual property line. Deb, do you remember? Was it this one?
I wiggle your mouse, Mariah, just lost you.
Property line or is this the property line? I don't remember.
Oh, you were correct, Mariah. It's the one under the W D.
Okay. So this is the actual property line of the IP mill. This, where we stopped it, is about where um, the developed section ends. So we limited them. What was that?
You just, you you used the C V section. You didn't change that, correct? You just, it's where the C V.
Extended C V here, so I would have to go back and look, but.
I believe in that area, Mike. We opted to not go further because it is literally, it's like straight ninety-degree angle, absolutely undevelopable land.
Yeah.
You've got it all the way through the property.
We extended the C V to be in line with this, I believe, was the case. So this side became rural residential and on the new map, um, we extended the C V to come around so that it was C V on both sides of the road here.
Yeah, can we, I know, you know, that's hard for me to understand what you did there. I I don't.
So this was on, so this is the the old map. It was rural residential. This is Route Two. This is the IP mill. You come around the corner where Christina's is right here. It became rural residential here and C V on this side. So on the new map, we proposed making it C V all the way on either side of the road until where it stops, right here.
Isn't that a, isn't that a hill? If you come up from the mill down to bottom, uh, and you're going towards where Christina's used to be at, there's a hill right there, right? It almost undevelopable.
Yeah, she's on the other side. She's talking about the other side of the road. They changed it to Central Village. It used to be rural residential. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the rea- the reason, again?
To keep it consistent on both sides of the road. So it was kind of strange that it was C V over here and down here, but that's it stopped over here. So we figured it made sense to just continue it until it stopped on both sides.
Do they have sewer and water to, on that side as far as you've drawn it?
Um, that's a good question. I don't know. Do you know, Brian, how far?
They have sewer until the parcel that you've got your cursor on. Right there. Water. The sewer and water system stops at the parcel next to it.
This one?
Correct.
So I wouldn't include those in Central Village. I don't think that's a good idea.
So, okay, so we would have to stop it here then.
Well, my concern would be is when you read the definitions for our zoning areas, um, the properties that we have elected to change from rural, I can never say that word right, um, to C V, they don't really meet the definition of rural. Um, so that was one of the things that I looked at as we were going through and doing this. And as over the years of neighborhoods and areas have developed, do they still meet our definitions as to what their properties are? Um, and for me, in this area, rural doesn't really fit a great deal of those properties.
I'm, I I guess I'm okay with up to where they don't have water and sewer and then you don't include those. You can change it.
Mike, can I ask, why do, why do them having water or sewer or not? Why, why does them being on town water or sewer, why is that a defining thing?
It helps for the area, the lot size.
Can you explain further? I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, that's one of the reasons you can put more people into a smaller lot size is because they have utilities. They have water and sewer.
I don't think I follow.
Well, I I'm not, I'm not sure. I think what Mike is saying, and you could correctly make, is that it's more feasible to have property where water and sewage is available and controllable rather than having it doing by septic tanks or whatever? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, if, look where the commercial, if you, every, I thought every place that had Central Village had sewer and water, no?
No, the entire Irving Center side doesn't have public water, doesn't have, it's not connected to water.
Right, my whole end of town are all wells.
Correct, okay. So even the up on top, that P U D we're planning up across from the Irving Paper Mill, they don't have I'm sorry, they, they don't have. So I'm not sure. I don't even know if if that's a good idea, having a PUD where there's no public water.
Well, people can still have wells, Mike. I I guess I don't understand, if if you're going to build a house, you have to have water. So whether it's through a well or public water, like there's, there's houses on this Irving Center. I mean, Deb lives over there. She's surviving somehow. So you have to, I mean, a developer can't say I'm gonna build a house here, but it doesn't have water.
So it's just sewer than that you have, Deb, in your area, right? You don't have.
I'm not even positive everyone has sewers. There's plenty of septics around me. Guys, but I don't know, I know up on, um, oh, the neighborhood by Zelensky Fields. I know there's some places up there, I believe, that have septics. Um, and I'll be honest, Mike, I I know in some instances, it's personal preference. Not everybody that wants to, not everyone that has the opportunity to hook into town utilities wants to. I know every couple of years it comes up that they want to put town water in on my end of town. And they can do what they want. I'm keeping my well. So I guess for me, it's a someone has to have it. And I think it would be very hard pressed to say our zoning districts, that's, that's part of the definition, because it it doesn't, I don't feel it's right to tell somebody that they have to take the town services if they are in a Central Village area. Or if, you know, then do you say if they're out in a rural residential, they can only have wells and and septics because they're out so much further? I guess to me, I understand, I can kind of see where you're coming from, but I I, for me personally, I wouldn't use it as a defining.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I didn't realize that there were places that were, well, your whole part of town didn't have water. If we look at the map again, I'm just um, and do what you wanted to do, that one parcel there, the I guess there's a couple par, I I'm pointing to the screen, Mariah, but I can't. Those two parcels. The worst that would happen is they could sub- subdivide them into a bunch of little Central Village lots. Right now, they're two acre locks, lots, is that right?
Um, yes, but they would have to have the frontage to be able to do that.
Yeah, one of them looks like it's got a ton of frontage.
Well, so this is also just one part of, like, so I forget what the ratio is, but if you have part of your parcel in one zone and part of it in another, you're only like, it has to be a certain amount, and I don't remember what it is. So like, they couldn't convert this entire parcel into C V.
Okay.
There was a, there was a ruling that said that whatever part of the zone had the the strictest restrictions and regulations on it, it would carry both sides of that zone. Is that not true?
Um, yes, I believe it is. I I think there's also some, um, yes. So basically, they could choose, depending on what their use was, if they were, say they were trying to build Walmart here, if one zone allowed them to build a Walmart, but one didn't, they wouldn't be able to build the Walmart, like you said. They would go with the strictest ruling.
Right, okay. I I, you know, what what I'm coming to, guys? Now, Deb, you've been at this a while, and Mike, you've been at this thirty-five years or more. And Mariah, you're for this. You know, you guys really understand a lot of this, but from my point of view, like, why is C V C V? Why is the French King French King? What is the overall regulations that say this? And how come Mike and I didn't know that there was parts of the area where Deb lives at that was not part of city water, cities, you know, city sewage? Um, we, we need to know all these things so that when these kinds of decisions are made and and considered, that we all are on the same page. Like, maybe Mike wouldn't be so resistant if he understood that that area up there where Deb lives at is not all city stuff. I mean, I didn't know that. And I didn't know that the rule didn't imply that Central Village didn't just have to be of of city water, but could be of, of a, of, of, of well water. I mean,
So.
we should know it, but I didn't.
I mean, I think you guys have been asking good questions. And sometimes the only way to learn the stuff is is to ask the question. Um, I mean, you guys have definitions here that, that, you know, we wrote together and they don't, they don't mention utilities.
The French King, read that one.
Yeah, we didn't finish that one.
Do too. But, uh, yeah, I don't know. I I I stand corrected. I, so I don't really have a problem with what you got got there across from the, for extending the commercial.
Okay, and then the last one is across town.
Well, there's the French King you looked at. You're good, right?
Yeah, we already looked at that one.
All right. Yeah, oh, I want to look at the frontages on some of these too, Mariah. Do we have that on a map anywhere?
Yeah, but it's hard. I I I I think I sent it to you, but it's hard to pull it all up.
I couldn't read them on the map that you sent me. I I I tried. I couldn't see any. I I saw some digit, digits, but.
Yeah, you have to click them. Uh, hold on.
Yeah, my, my.
So this, oh, that's the wrong, so the IP mill parcel is three, thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred feet of frontage. And then one of the other ones is fourteen hundred. The parcel that is the parking lot across the street is also about fourteen hundred. That's this, oh, yeah, so this is fourteen hundred. The other one is thirty-five hundred. Renovators has six hundred and eighteen feet along River Street and eight hundred and fourteen along Stratchon.
Okay, good.
This area has, so it's this first parcel that was three hundred and ninety-one that has the motel. So that wouldn't fit the the frontage requirement. Um, this house has six hundred and sixty-one. This house has twenty-five. I don't know how that happened. Um, this has three hundred and eighty nine hundred, which is the state G P W building. And then the police station has three hundred and fifty. So that also wouldn't fit in your five hundred or your four hundred, um, requirement. And then across town.
So we'd have just one parcel there unless they combine parcels that would meet the frontage requirement, okay?
So, so when you get done this, Mariah, I'd like to go back over there and ask where we just left from. How come? I mean, it's like the twenty-five feet of frontage that you were talking about got in there. And you're not gonna, it has to be grandfathered in. But it's like that property in the back of renovated supplies. Some of that stuff was. But it's like that property in the back of renovated supplies. Some of that stuff was put into place. Without the current rules and regulations applying to it. And so it makes it. You know, we have to make sure that. That that those things are legal. For an example, the twenty five foot footage. Can you go back to the other part of the map where we were before?
And I'm wondering if that was maybe a mistake and it was a hundred and twenty five, because I think that's our limit in.
Back in the early two thousands, Moonlight, and and maybe Michael remember this, uh, you started to have a few subdivisions in town. And they were creating things that looked like, they call them pork chops or pinwheels. You had these little access points off of of major roadways, but they weren't getting their frontage from there. And so that is a an old site. Where a house was able to be developed, it predated your updated subdivision regulations that you did in the early two thousands. You can't get away with that now with your current rules. Uh, but there were a few things that are, to your point, grandfathered because they they did occur um in previous years. Uh, but you all addressed that about two decades ago.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see on here, this is the tiny bit of frontage they have, and then it comes back out here. It looks like a flagpole.
Yeah, mine looks like that. Mine's a pork, they call it a pork chop.
Yep.
Mine is. I have a mile of frontage, if you follow my property line. Because it's, it goes all over. It's only ten feet wide in places, but that's okay.
Right. I think your neighborhood, Mike, and a Ridge Road Extension is another one that that developed in a similar way.
Okay, so now, so we're, how much land did they have, Mariah, there? I'm sorry, by the paper mill? Did we look at that one yet?
This one is, yeah, thirty five hundred feet and then fourteen twenty six.
I I'm sorry, I meant the other paper mill, the Irving Irving paper, up at the other end.
Oh, the other, sorry, the other other mill. So. This one has fourteen hundred feet of frontage, this big one.
Okay. Yeah.
Hold on, there's this section on the other side of the road. Is part of the highway now, uh, or no, it was part of the highway, it was discontinued, and now it's the Irving Paper Mill property. And Jackie guessed it was about thirteen hundred feet of frontage. And then down here is a thousand, and that is, uh, I believe that's also Paper Mill property.
I don't, uh, it's gotta be close to their treatment plant down there, I would think.
Down the bottom where it occurs, I would think so. And let's talk about odor.
Treatment plant is on the other side of the railroad, right, right there, yep.
Right here, yeah, I think it's right around here.
So they could, they could develop, there is some developable land. In there too, I don't. I I might want to look at that too, if I could. I I I'm not that familiar with that area down there.
I can reach out tomorrow.
Okay. And then the 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 other side of the mountain, uh, the road, there's, there's already one exit. Entrance going up isn't there? When I drive by, I see like a road that goes up to the top.
I've seen that too one time. Can you get up there?
I've never been up there, no.
You can see the outlines of was a paper road right there. Um, I I'm using a cursor and you can't see it, obviously, I apologize. To the, to the left of the PUD. There's a paper road that you can see an outline of. It um is what the mill has used as an access road to get up to uh their water, uh, their water tank. Um, but that is some access point, or it could be a potential access point to this land.
So most of the.
No trespassing, I believe.
Could you say that again, Deb?
I believe there's actually a gate. I don't know if it gets left open often, um, but it's actually gated, and I believe it it's pointedly called out that it's private property. Um, I don't know if they had problems with hikers and stuff going up there or what, but.
It is right across from the paper mill though, isn't it?
Correct. The town, um, the town has had obviously a very long history with the mill, and we swap parcels back and forth regularly. And that is a parcel that the town had swapped it back with the mill probably back when Route Two was adjusted. Um, and when we were moving property around, so we we did give that back to the mill, but it does have that shape to it like a road, and. They probably had to gate it because people were accessing it.
So most of the PUD would be towards Orange from. The, you know, when you go up that road, it's mostly. Going east, I guess, if I'm looking at it right. I I I expected it not like that. Or am I, am I missing something?
What do you mean, like towards Orange? So like town halls over here?
Yeah, so most of the PUD would be, when you go up that road, it would all be behind, be going. East. I didn't realize that road was so far to the left side of the PUD, you know. I've never been up there either. I'd like to, I don't know what's up. It looks pretty steep. Have you been up there, Brian?
Uh, I have not been to that specific entrance. I've been on the other side of it. You can see where it goes up to it. On paper would loop right up to Prospect Street uh extension. So we obviously, that's a town road and and we do a lot of work up there. So I've been on that section coming down, but I haven't been specifically where it meets Route Two.
All right. Well, thank you. If we could, yeah, maybe get to look, I'd like to look at that too. Is this the corrected PUD you have here? Mariah, where it doesn't, it stays to the CV section? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
And is that, did that change that CV section, or is that the same as what it was, or?
Um.
Didn't we reduce it to seven fifty instead of a thousand?
Yeah. I think it was.
Did a little bit more.
Yeah, I think we took it down some, so, yeah. Was it a thousand before, Deb? What did you say you thought we reduced it to?
I think it went from a thousand to seven fifty, and then we just kind of like straightened it out a little bit.
Yeah.
We made it a little less curvy.
Yeah.
And then the reasoning be be taking all this down from a thousand to seven fifty. Was that all CV sections, or was that just?
Yeah, so this was all CV before. Um, here, I can actually show you side by side. So. We changed the VR to line up. This is the new one on the side. This is the old one on the left side. So on the right side, you can see we changed VR to line up more with this property boundary. And. This was all CV, but it was, it was kind of bumpy, and we just made it so that it was seven hundred and fifty feet from Route Two. I believe. Which I think this was bumpy because it was a thousand feet from here. I don't know why it doesn't show up that way on here. But. That was what we asked for, so I can double check about that too.
I don't think it changed to be truthful.
I mean, two hundred and fifty feet at this scale doesn't look like a lot. Um, or, yeah, so I I think he might have shrunk it, but I can double check. When we make, if we make other changes.
You can look at the road. And the eyelash on the road sticking past the CV is about the same length on both of them. See what I'm looking at? The little black line. That can up. Well, by the P on PUD, the black road going up in there. You keep following up, follow the, follow the, the, yeah, keep following the black line though, Mariah, no, I'm sorry, follow the road. There you go, and see how far you go out of the PUD, out of, out of CV. You go about a quarter inch. Are you following?
Okay, well, we can definitely double check that.
And then if it doesn't look much different on the other one to me, they're about the same.
Yeah, it looks like it might be, well, so I'm wondering, because it looks smaller over here. So that was the other thing, was we extended it along Route Two until the edge of Orange. It was weird that it kind of stopped here. Um, but yeah, I'm not sure. Because it does look the same here, but we can double check on that.
Is there, again, I, for infrastructure, is there anything that stops? Where it used to stop? Is there water that stops there, or? Or not water, sewer, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm learning.
I I don't know, you mean why it would have stopped?
Yeah, why did they stop where they did?
I'm guessing that this was a ridge, because I think this is all that like. Kind of cliff, like I think the cliff is somewhere over here, like wall. And then over here, I think it kind of flattens out some. I imagine that this is a stream maybe. Or something right here. It looks like there was a natural boundary that they just kind of followed.
That's also the state forest.
Oh. Um, but I don't think it comes all the way down, does it?
Yeah, it touches right along Route Two. That all of those roads, Nursery Road, Moss Brook Road, all of those are are old roads that existed, and then it became part of the state forest. So, yeah, that's theirs.
So you don't want to add that to Central Village, I don't think.
I, the, the. That's a good question. I don't, yeah, I think that was part of the reason why that it didn't stop. I think that should be the property line.
Gotcha. So we can take that out if that's the case.
All right, so I. I hope I'm capturing some of this stuff, but we'll try. And Ryan, I guess the other, you know, I've, it's gonna take a while to get to all these sites, but I I haven't been to the IP plant. Site either, the back of that where the pump house is. I'd like to, if I could, get a tour of that sometime.
It's, sorry, Mike, I had a dog barking in the background.
That's your dog?
I apologize.
Now, the IP. Yeah, I I guess I don't, you know, the IP plant I'd like to look at too, the uh. I haven't really walked behind it out where the canal, the pump house is and.
Yeah. I can arrange a time that we can meet, uh, anybody from the planning board who wants to go down there and and we can open it up and take a tour of it.
Okay, that'd be great. I know. Moonlight's gonna be on for a little while. When are you coming back, Moonlight, in a month?
The twenty seventh.
Okay. Okay, I'll, oh, thank you, Brian. I'll, I'll try to get available and and whenever possible, but.
Okay.
I would like to look at some of these, so.
Again, another problem.
I think that's everything on that. We, did you want to go through the other changes you guys are looking at making for streets and properties?
I will ask Deb to do that because I haven't looked at this in a while, and to be honest, I don't remember off the top of my head. Uh, that's the wrong one. I think we, um.
Why don't you, Mariah, if you don't mind, um. Why don't you go, let's start with River Road. I know we had a small change there. I think.
Yeah, so, oh, boy.
Is this, I, we're almost, this is taken on a big project for ten minutes where. Can we maybe start next meeting with this? Would that be okay, or or? I, I'm, I'm looking at the clock and we're, we're almost, we got ten minutes to wrap up, and this is gonna. Be a tough one for me to understand, I think, in ten minutes, so. Let's, if you don't mind, let's put table this until next time, and then, um, what? What else did we have on the agenda? I know we want to get to Peggy's questions. So the. Flood plane is on hold. You had a, you want to let us know what you had today, Mariah?
So I did find out that it has the floodplain administrator has to be someone who is on staff at the town. It can't be someone who works for the county or a volunteer position. Um, so I think the position that makes the most sense is either Chief Wonka or me, um, and I can have a conversation with Brian about that. Um, the Miller's River uh watershed maps are going to be updated before the Deerfield Rivers. Um, my understanding is that once we have the new maps, it will make. The enforcement of this. Um, a lot easier because we're not going to be looking at paper, super outdated, uh, eighties floodplain maps. So. Yeah, I'll I'll talk with Brian, and if I need to talk to chief, I will. We'll figure out who makes the most sense to be. Um, the administrator for this and kind of what that process looks like, and then I think, um. We're not, it turns out that we're not actually required to do this right away like we thought. The wording they included made it sound like as soon as we updated. Any of our zoning, we would be required to do that. Um, it sounds like they've been inundated with reviewing these, so they don't even have time to review more. Right now. Um, so they said that I believe we have until twenty twenty three to update them. I think our maps for the Miller's River Watershed should be coming out, it sounds like later this year. Um, and so I think we can. You know, have our language mostly finalized, and then, um, whether it's at a special town meeting later this year. Or next year's annual town meeting, you can um move forward with this.
Good, good. And I said I was gonna. If anybody has anything they want to add to the special permits or. Um, site plans, please let me know, and I'll try to get that drafted. I was gonna do it for the night, and I didn't do it. Lot sizes and frontage, we, we, we've discussed, I guess, some, we may need to discuss it some more. That might be a question we could ask Peggy too, if if there. Anything concerning how small we should go with lot sizes and. Is Brian, he's left right now? Yeah.
Come here.
I haven't. I haven't heard any more about the French King Solar Connection, Brian. Have you? Have they reached out yet?
They still have not submitted the site plan amendment.
Okay. Do you think there's anything we have to do as a planning board, or?
No, but what I could do is reach back out to uh, Bob on that project and just see where where they are, if they're ready to submit that.
All right.
Do they need to submit to us, Brian? Because I drove by the other day, and there's all kinds of pink flags up in that area.
Yeah, they were marking it out. The, to be very honest. Somebody else has something to add to the conversation. The the big hurdle is Mast dot, Mast dot was obviously in favor of it. Um, Mike saw the the team that showed up from both. Uh, Mast dot and EverSource. Um, EverSource is is the one requiring this. Um, so for our standpoint. Um, it it is a change, but it's a minor change from our site plan review process. Um, the planning board didn't have a special permit on that. Um, the planning board didn't have a special permit on that, so from a legality standpoint or regulatory standpoint, there's not a lot that could be done, um, with this alteration. Um, the only other special permit that was on this project is the Water Commissioners. But the Water Commissioners were looking at water infiltration and impacts to the soil. Um, and then obviously the water as it enters into the, the recharge area for the, the water system. Um, but this change isn't gonna impact that either, so even if the Water Commissioners reviewed a, an amended site plan, it's not gonna change the conditions that they put on it too, so. But I will follow up, just so your, your records are up to date, you should have it, and if it does spark any concern, that you have a chance to communicate it.
Yeah, I didn't have any issue with what they were planning to do anyhow, so, uh. And then, we, I guess, we, we need to discuss maybe at the next meeting how we wanna present different parts of the bylaws to, for town meeting, do we? And, um, I, I think we need to put it in bites that people can understand. Uh, that, that would be my recommendation, and, and like Deb has said, we need to have here, public hearings, uh, meetings ahead of time so that we can get people's ideas. Um, business cards, last time, Brian, we talked a little bit with Jake, and he, he said that, uh, we probably didn't need to have per, a personal extension if we could use somebody on staff to, I, it used to go to Betsy's, it's a card, I guess, at one time, and, um, or a phone number, so. Uh, Mariah said if, if we didn't, she didn't get too many calls, she wouldn't be willing to do it, but.
That's fine, so what we can do is personalize the business cards with your direct emails. And for a generic phone number, we can set it up with Mariah's, and, and, um, there's not too many calls that are gonna come in for this. And, and as we've discussed before, the branding project hasn't been completed yet, so we don't have a new uh, business card layout, but we do have the old one that we had in-house, so I can print a stack from uh, leftover stock that we have, it's the old style. Um, and then they'll just be updated in the future when we finally have our branding package done. Um, and then just. Sorry.
Should it be, um, should, sorry to interrupt, but should it be rather than individual emails? Should it just be the, the planning board email, since the phone number, if someone gets a Mike Schaefer business card and it has a Mike Schaefer email, but it has my phone number, that might be kind of confusing?
Uh, it's a, we can style this in any way that makes sense. I would just say if, if you put the planning board's generic email, it's gonna go out to all five of you. And if all five of you get it, and then that, I, I think you will do a great job of not having dialogue by email. Um, but if you're getting a, a flood of emails, uh, from some developer, um, it, I just wanna make sure that you're taking as information, and, and only the directed person is the one responding. We don't wanna have the, the board communicating or deliberating outside of a meeting. Um, so, but we can be as clear and, and, um, on the email, or on the business cards as you, as you all want. And Mike, just real quick, back to your question about your strategy, or your discussion point about your strategy for presenting the bylaws. Town council is happy to meet with you all, and just having a conversation, maybe giving you some guidance, um, as she's done zoning updates with other, uh, member towns. Um, and she can discuss with you how to, recommendations and how to present it. If there's certain things that maybe all work together, or maybe other things that should be held for a different meeting. Um, she's even willing, if, if the whole board doesn't feel that they wanna meet with council, she's willing to meet with representative of the board. And if you're interested, just let me know, and I can set that up.
Yeah, I, I, let me, uh, maybe we could, um, Peggy's coming to our next meeting, but if, if, would she be willing to come to one of our meetings, you think, uh, and discuss?
Yeah, as long as I give her enough notice, she's going into annual town meeting, uh, mode for the next three months. So her schedule fills quickly with all her member towns, but if I get it on her calendar now, there's a good chance that I could book her.
But, so May, uh, how about June? Would that be okay with folks if we tried to get her to speak at our June meeting, or meet with us?
I guess my question would be, we don't have anything ready. I mean, we haven't voted on anything, we haven't accepted anything. So I, I, I guess for me, I don't see yet what the purpose of having her come yet is.
I'm definitely not trying to, to put the cart before the horse. I'll, I'll just leave that as an open invitation, and as long as you all just give me some notice, I can get her to a meeting or to meet with a representative, however the five of you wanna proceed.
Well, let's talk about it a minute. I mean, not, not now as a minute, but let's, let's, you know, turn around a little bit so that we could get it together. I'd like, I'd like to be on that. I don't know what the, how soon it would be or whatever, but.
Okay.
I mean, we just need to talk, you know, we just need to arrange it.
Well, I think she, you know, it'd be good to get her, like Brian said, she's done this for a lot of towns and maybe get her perspective on how she would go about it.
Okay.
You know, it might be helpful in how we lay out what we're gonna do, uh.
My, my suggestion would be maybe you have another meeting or two and kind of make sure that you have, maybe not finalized, um, you know, maybe not everything is voted on finalized, but maybe you have a, a better idea of here, all of the things, and all, like the, the general language that we want. And then maybe invite her in, um, you know, August or September, once you've had a few more meetings. And then she can kind of review it and say, I think this makes sense, I think this doesn't, and kind of maybe there's an order to it or something like that, so that you're not kind of, like Deb said, you don't wanna have, you know, nothing prepared, but like you said, Mike, she can probably offer you guidance on how to arrange things. So maybe the, the compromise there is wait another couple meetings, and then towards the end of the summer, she can come and kind of look at it.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't have a problem waiting a couple more meetings, so this is March, uh, April, May, May, June. So like you said, August maybe, uh. That would be three, three or four months out, so we should have a better idea by then, I hope.
I would hope so.
All right, um, any other new business?
Thank you again, all of you, for, um, adjusting your, your meeting schedule to accommodate my need to get out of here tomorrow. Thank you.
I hope you have safe travel.
Is it okay for six o'clock on, uh, the twentieth? Is that all right with everybody, moving it up an hour?
Uh, this, of, of, of what? May?
May tw- May twentieth.
Sure, I don't care. I'll go for it.
Yeah, Peggy, it's, it's, we'll let Peggy, so can I, can I try to repeat some action items, uh, for Peggy, questions? We, we've got, um, maybe questions around PUDs, if anybody has any, um, auxiliary dwelling units. And, and Mariah, you know all this, but I, I keep getting confused on, uh, like affordable housing, what what the different levels of affordable housing are, you know, uh. Do we, have you got that information? You, you, you sent it out to us like a year ago, I think.
Um, I can try to see, I don't remember what I sent to you. There's a lot of webinars, um, that have recently been happening around different funding, um, so depending on what you wanna know, um, I, I can try to assemble some kind of resources for you on that, if you'd like.
Yeah, I, this, I, yeah, if you could, if there's a summary table that says like, what's low income, what's, I can't remember all the different levels of affordable housing, um.
Okay.
I can't, you know, and maybe, though, I have some questions around that. Anybody have any other questions I can capture?
I know Deb said you have some specific affordable housing questions. I don't know if you wanna afford those to Mike, or send them to yourself, or?
I was just gonna say, I will take pity on you, Mike, cause I know how hard minutes and this is. I will shoot you an email, um, tonight or tomorrow with my questions for Peggy for you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I think that's about it, and I appreciate everybody's time. Um, I had my second shot today, so.
Oh.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I guess.
Yep. So it should be all right, Mike. It, it should be all right. You'll be all right with the arm for about a week and a half, and then it'll be better.
Well, have a safe trip, Moonlight, and, uh, can I, so the, I make a motion to close the meeting at nine oh two?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, now I have to read my notes, that's gonna be the worst part of it.
I'll give you a hint, Mike, wait till they post the video, and then go watch the video to do the minutes.
I don't want, no, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you all. Night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Thanks, Brian, for staying with us.
Thanks, Brian.